I call this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. And the first item is the adoption of the agenda for the regular meeting. February 24th, adoption of the agenda. Council Corlick, second Council Thompson, all those in favor. And we have two sets of minutes. Can we combine these? Probably not, because the public hearing ones, you might want to comment on. Okay, special going camera minutes, motion to adopt. Council Zelinski seconded by Council Studley, all those in favor. And the public hearing minutes, you'll see that you have some additions. We'll deal with those when we get to them. In terms of the public hearing, but a motion to adopt the public hearing minutes. Council Thompson, Council Corlick, all those in favor. Any comments or anything out of that? Anyone wants to bring forward? Nothing. Reports from City Council. Just a minute, we've got one more here. Regular meeting of February the 10th, motion to adopt. Council Studley, Council Thompson, all those in favor. Business arising from that? And council reports. Let's start with Council Corlick, she had her say first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been busy with different budget proposals with the RDKB, the BCDC, and us. So three different budgets I've been sitting in and listening to and trying to figure out where everything's coming, going, and gone. So it's been real interesting, it's a challenge to learn that, and nothing, none of them have been passed yet, but will be in the next little while. So it's been really interesting for me. Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I just go into the Regional District at the same time?
Do you mind that, Council? Just lend them to me, I'll go ahead.
So since taking the role of the representatives to Regional District and the BCDC, I'm also on the Trails Master Plan Committee. It's a huge learning curve. I have lots to learn at all those levels. And it's very interesting to see where we fit into the overall scheme of things. I'm truly enjoying it, and everybody's been pretty welcoming and very patient with me and my questions. But I think it's great. And I just also want to comment, I questioned, I had a phone call the other day, and it was from a lady that wanted to know who the emergency management person was. And I just put it out there. And response from our staff, and in particular Chris Marsh, he has been a wealth of information for me, and he let me know that it is Mark Stevens, who is an emergency management person that through Regional District that has the information and things that we might, hopefully we don't need to know. But he's there and willing to talk and provide whatever we might need. So basically, that's what I've been doing as a councilperson, is attending and learning on the different levels of government we have in our areas. It's really interesting, I didn't realize how intertwined it is, and we can't go without the other. It's just a very interesting thing. I also want to just thank all the staff and all the people that have been helping me up and down the stairs in the past month, since there's been no elevator, and it's a bit of a challenge when you only have one foot. So anyway, I want to thank everybody for that, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to take these positions and learn things.
Thank you. And Council Mouslin also had a written report.
Yes. Thank you, your worship, as I try to get my microphone going. The advisory group, you know, called the SAG group, as it's usually called around the table, met on February 12th, and meets again this week, your worship, on February 26th. Okay. There were some interesting reports from other agencies there coming into it. The first one about the Stay Safe Shelter is in my report, an average of five clients per night, few, no complaints at that time. There was a public meeting on February 14th at the Curran Rink, but a dozen people attended. The most important report that came out of that for me was that Boundary Family Support Services will submit an extreme weather response plan next year. Sometime in June, I'm hearing. Okay, that will make them the provider, the location, that's still up in the air, I'm assuming, but at least we have, there's a provider. So I'm grateful that Boundary Family Support Services is stepping forward to doing that. There is news too about the seniors society at the Veronica Lodge having some problems. I'm waiting to see how that plays out, I'm a little bit confused about it. And anyways, and the PIT count does seem to be going forward, your worship, at this point, with the volunteers. We are working marmar closely with the province. Heather Elliott is a representative from the province, and then there's a lady by the name of Deb Close, who works for BC Housing, and through her, I've also been communicating with a fellow by the name of Dustin Lutwick, who is from the Homelessness Services Association of BC. Anyways, Deb and Dustin are in charge of doing 16 PIT counts, point in time counts, around the province. And they were quite, when they found out that we were doing one, they were quite interested. And we've been in discussions, and we're still working on those discussions, about whether to pursue our own count or join the province's counts. But that's not a, for me, so I'm never going to talk about it at the subcommittee level, and then at the Social Services Advisory Group on my end state. We'll see how that all turns out. Okay. Discover Grand Forks was another liaison that I'm working with. It was interesting to me that we'd sit down and talk about it, and people keep coming up with ideas of what to do with the grant, with the forests. You know, the place where the two rivers meet, you know, whether it should be just trails and gentle benches, and well, we've had a pump track, somebody wants to put a pump track there, have kids ride around, little kids ride around. And then there was also a suggestion to make an outdoor hockey rink. Anyhow, you know, both of these are very difficult to say yes, because we're going to tear up the street and build a dike, it's kind of hard to imagine anything else. But what I'd like to just pass that around to our, that the community has aspirations for the forest. Just how that plays out in the years ahead, I don't know. I attended the Recreation Commission, which is also an assignment I have, and this is, this group has been meeting for decades, guiding the administration of the arena and aquatic center. There's some concern from this group of citizen volunteers, because five of its members will no longer be able to serve past this year, having reached the end of their six year terms. You only serve six years, okay, usually, and in sequence. So five of the nine are at the end of their six. So we're looking for people to volunteer. So if you work at the aquatic center, or enjoy the aquatic center, or the arena, you know, they can use you. Please walk into the recreation office and volunteer to be on the Rec Commission. And people here, Nigel, is Nigel here tonight? Nigel's not here tonight. Nigel's on that, on that commission. Nigel requested, and the committee approved, that the drop in fees for anyone over 80 visiting the facilities would be waived. And the Rec Commission agreed with that recommendation, so that's going to go forward up the line. So if you're 80, good for you, keep fit. And the last thing, Mayor, I want to do is I just want to call out to a couple people in our community who work really hard in the background, in fact, it's kind of secretive. But they have a network of millions of people around the world, and that's the Geocachers. And I'm very proud to say that I am a member of the Team Cootney Boundary Geocachers. There's a little coin. And a call out to those volunteers who do so much to bring others, because many people do come to our community on a regular basis to do the Geocachers. And other communities have taken advantage of that by doing special Geocache routes. You know, special call out to Perpustane and Scotty Cat for all the help.
Thank you, Councilor. I'm assuming that the Geocaching also are big supporters of the trails and all of the links and connections that we make.
Yes, and quite often, the Geocachers are on the trails.
Right.
And take you to many hidden trails. In fact, that's beautiful about Geocaching, you can be in a completely strange place that you've never been before, open up the app, and you'll probably find Geocachers. As though if you follow, go looking for those Geocachers, you'll often find some beautiful places.
Excellent, thank you. And moving around the table, Council Zelinski.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I've got some questions for staff and then some comments. I'll start with my questions through you, Mr. Mayor. We had an incident with our entrance sign at the east end of town. Can anybody let me know what's going on there?
Maybe if you warn people about this question before, they'd be ready to answer it.
I asked the question a week and a half ago, so I'm just waiting for the next two minutes.
My understanding is we've had chronic issues with theft of our battery banks and our copper wires and such, so what we're doing is looking at hooking them up to the forest. So we're in the process of getting some costing on that to find out what that's going to be.
So they are on it?
Yeah, so if anyone's gone by our sign on the east end, someone stole our solar panel, the batteries, the pole, the whole, the whole match, so. Flood preparedness, I asked at the last council meeting whether or not we can get a presentation from Regional District on what our preparedness is and what the plan is, so where are we with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I can answer that one. So this morning, we had a, I met with the Regional District, Mr. Watt was with me as well. There is a plan to have a workshop with elected officials for the whole Boundary Region that the RDKB is putting together to specifically talk to council and to the other elected officials from Midway and Greenwood as well, along with the RD representatives from the area here. It's probably going to be slated for somewhere early April at this point. Mr. Witzke has as well been at a preparedness level workshop from a staff side, so I can try to gather more details, so we have a little bit more definitive operational guidelines if council wants. But from an operational side, the RD has this under control. Mark Stevens is in charge of the emergency program at RD, along with Chris Marsh is helping out when he needs to, so that the same people are still involved. We definitely have learned lessons from the last time, and some of the key things that are coming out of the recovery group as we're winding that process down, that's what really the meeting today was all about, about the next steps for the recovery to phase out and the resiliency portion to go into full gear. At the end of the day, the RD is still the main provider for emergency services for the area. We're hoping to have a simple agreement between council and the RDKB board, signed to extend the emergency response plan. That is currently kind of hanging in limbo a little bit for another two years, until the new plan can be updated and implemented properly.
Immediate response is being planned from the management staff and then rolled out to the public in early April.
Yeah, there's another meeting planned for March, follow-up meeting from the one that happened on the operational level with Mr. Witzke here, that happened two weeks ago. So that's planned to follow up in March again, and then for the elected official side, it will be in April to go through that. So operationally, we're on this as good as we can at this point, we keep our eyes on the snow levels. The water level sensors that we installed last year, we're going to give the RD access to, we're going to try to give them up-to-date information, like maybe direct access, or at least via email, to send them information on a daily basis, so they can use that data collected from the river stream to see where the levels are at, if there's any risk at any time, so they're the key people monitoring it. And today, they were saying, really, we have to wait till for the March snowpack levels and the April ones to really see what's going to happen. It's too early to determine where the weather is going to go, or where were the runoffs and what the freshet is going to bring.
Thank you. Mr. Councilor.
Okay, thank you. So as soon as we can get, let the public know what our plans are, all the better for everybody. RFPs, any flood works, whether it's the downtown de-watering, but all, the main thing is engineer of record. Where are the RFPs for that and when can we expect them out?
Excellent. The RFPs are currently, sorry. The first draft of the RFPs for the municipal engineering have been completed, they're just getting reviewed by staff. Plan is to get them out next week, and the completion date will be March 24th.
Thank you.
So staff received a letter from the seniors society a little while ago. Yeah, an update on how we proceed from there, let's start there.
The seniors issue is on the agenda, is it not? The letter from the seniors, or did we put that on the agenda?
I can see it on the agenda, so that's my guess.
Okay, and...
I think that came in after the agenda was done.
Right, so the way I understand it is that they are looking for us to lease the property. You and Council Mouslin met with them?
So I had a chance, actually, Councilor, Studley and myself, had a chance to meet with the owner of the building.
Yes.
And he had some different ideas on how to proceed in trying to keep the seniors in there. What we sent him away with and asked was to get a letter from him and the seniors on what they are actually requesting. So we've got that letter now. I think Council Studley had an excellent suggestion, that if we could invite the seniors to our committee of the whole, and they can explain what they want, I think is a great plan.
Council Studley, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, it was a great meeting. I believe my question was, would we like to just invite them, or would we like to see them actually make a request for delegation? Because either way, I'd like to let them know, because I was going to reply to their email and just say, hey, you've got us in the delegation form, or, hey, keep your eye on inbox, we're inviting you, right?
A question, is there a business plan behind the request here?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, one of the concerns that I saw from that two-page letter that we received is there was no real business plan behind it. There was no find, there was no dollars on there. It simply said for the city to lease the property, and then to sublease it to the seniors, but there was no terms, no nothing. As far as I know, the building, obviously, it seemed like there was pipes frozen. And in what, in what state does council want to leave the facility or maintain the facility? There's dollars here that are, that are missing on that sheet, so yes, it would be great if the property owner and the seniors society could, could come before council at a committee of the whole level and bring an actual business case that has dollar amounts associated with it, so we can budget with it.
Council Thompson?
Just a comment on that, that's a privately owned facility. From my perspective as a councilor, I don't want to set a precedent on becoming involved in that. And I am a senior, although I'm not a member of the society, but, no, I think that that is something that they need to resolve on their own. I can't see the city becoming involved in any, in any part of that.
So it seems we have a missing business plan, so if what you're suggesting is they come to council with, with their request without any further business plan, I'm not sure that's going to be constructive here. Would you be prepared to maybe work with them before you bring something before council, before they bring something before council?
Well, and I think that's where we're at, Mr. Mayor, is that there are a lot of things that the city can do to support the group. I agree with you, this probably isn't the one, but I know in our meeting, we bounced around a couple of different things on how we could support it and still fall within our regular mandate. And I guess what I will do is I'll get hold of the seniors, have them fill out the delegation form, and try and get them at the committee of the whole.
But in fact, we value that seniors group, they've done a lot over the years.
So on that note, there is another request, and whether or not you need a motion or not, is there still is a usable furnace in the old building?
It's already underway.
Okay, so that was the question, is being seniors, they don't necessarily have the ability to remove it and deliver it, and I'm hoping staff could do that for them.
This is something that's happening.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I believe the seniors already picked up the key and were working on that themselves, at least that's as it was on Friday or Thursday morning last week. So maybe things have changed, but yeah, there may be a way where we can assist with something like a truck to move it from one place to the other if they don't have it or the manpower. That's an option. In terms of the delegation, the deadline would be this Friday, so it would be appreciated if we get it by then.
Okay, so yeah, I think things might have changed on that furnace, but I'll have someone from the seniors society get ahold of yourself, or Dave Bruce?
Mr. Bruce.
Okay, Dave Bruce. And the last thing I had, Mr. Mayor, is just for, maybe Kevin can talk to this a little better than I can. Our volunteer fire department is always looking for members, and has a very unique opportunity for the community, anybody that's interested out there. And I believe on March 11th, it's Wednesday night, that anybody interested or just find out what kind of help our fire department can, can use, can come out to the practice, March 11th, Wednesday, 7 o'clock, phone ahead to make sure that they have enough gear for you. But anybody that's interested or has questions, that's the time to do it, so hopefully we'll see everybody there. Thanks.
Good promo. Thank you. And Council Thompson?
Just a couple of things. I have also participated in our budget workshops here in City Hall, they've been well presented, and we're going to have some decisions that we have to make, which may or may not be law received, but they have to be made. I attended the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group. Darren Pratt had requested Council Mouslin to chair the meeting, but he is the recording secretary, and I don't like taking minutes, so I chaired the meeting, and it was, I didn't vote, Council Mouslin voted, because there's only one vote per group. And the other thing I wanted to report is with the new responsibilities that Council Corlick has undertaken with the, her responsibilities with the Regional District, she has asked and me, and the mayor has agreed, that in addition to being the liaison to the Downtown Business Association, I will also take on the responsibility of liaison for the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce, or Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Studley?
Not much to add, I think Zelinski touched on most of it I had. I guess the thing is, is just everybody keep eyes on events. There was a great concert a couple nights ago, the Alcatz performed at Fourth Street Studio. A couple weeks before that, there's another performance there upcoming. There is Joseph Louis's Technicolor Dreamcoat, and there's always a host to other events coming, so pay attention to all forms of media and attend all those lovely events.
Thank you. And Council, I just want to bring your attention to the vital signs, I mean, there's some copies of it here. Interesting job they did this year, and that there was no path to fail model to it, it was good information on each community and worth absorbing in terms of future planning, so I'd encourage everybody to get a copy of that and check it out. I have a motion.
Where can you get a copy?
I believe they'll be available around town, but from the chamber itself, I think the, also Gary Smith has a number of copies, the easiest to get from him and the Phoenix Foundation. That would probably be two sources.
Mr. Mayor, I understand there are actually some copies here in the lobby as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, council reports, can I have a motion to accept council reports? Council Corlick, Council Thompson, all those in favor? And Council Tom, oh, Council Thompson, Council Corlick, anything further on the Regional District that you would like to highlight?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry. There's so much that's coming and will be affecting us right down the line, and until everything's in place, it's a little difficult to say this is going to happen, if that's going to happen, how it affects us here. And as I say, it sort of all works together as a whole, and we will be doing more budget talks this week, Thursday, even more, and then next week as well, and then there'll be some definite things decided. And I never thought I'd be interested in landfill site, but I am. I just see that, how important it is to be mindful of what we're doing in all areas. And we're heading into, in the next few years, a huge possibility of having a lot of things taken to our landfill with ruckles and the flooding issues that we're resolving and things like that, so there's going to be such a huge thing. And for us as individuals, there's going to be more and more issues with landfill. And whether, and there has been with our landfill site, we've had theft and vandalism and all sorts of things that I would never even think anybody would be going into a dump to steal or do damage. It just doesn't make sense to me, but whatever. So they've taken steps to rectify that, and they've fought for security and things, so that was an interesting thing too. And there's just, it's quite amazing, all the far-reaching, it's a huge district, Regional District is very big. And when I talk about the BCDC, that's about the west side, so that's from Grand Forks West, the communities that are there and how it affects them. So on the other side of the mountains, it's kind of almost as different. We're together, but we all have different needs and different wants, and different sources of finances, and different in that aspect, and it's just, it's just really interesting. And again, I think it's for the opportunity to learn, and that's what it is for me right now, is a total learning thing, because I did, as I said earlier, I didn't realize how connected we really were, and where Grand Forks fits into this pocket. And I think that I'm enjoying learning that, so thank you.
They must be excited about the expansion of the composting facilities. Valmar actually, here in Grand Forks, started regional diversion, and it's been so successful that the rest of the region is now moving that way, so thanks to Grand Forks, but that was a big grant to move that direction.
And I should mention too, transit, big issue of transit in our communities and from here west. There's a meeting on March 3rd at the high school, 7:00 PM, to discuss our transit needs and wants. And I would urge everybody to go that has any interest in that at all, and see how it's going to affect our community as Grand Forks, and then as a Regional District, and also all the areas west of us. all the areas west of us. It is a huge, it's a big topic, and it's going to be really important for people to have input, and that's where we are now at this stage. We need community input on that. And without that, we're not going to, all decisions will be made, and hopefully they'll be acceptable to everyone, or at least palatable, I don't know. So I urge all to come out to the meeting on March 3rd, high school, 7:00 p.m. So it's about our transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Korlick. And a motion to accept the reports from the regional district. Counselor Thompson, second, Counselor Zelinski, all those in favor? Thank you, councilors. Recommendations from staff for decisions. The green infrastructure, environment, substream stormwater management and treatment grant, that's a mouthful. In simple terms, I think it's a way of eliminating a lot of crap from the downtown core going into the river by having various methods of cleaning that, diverting it, straightening it out. It's a program basically that's going to go back five years to completion, so it's not going to be completed till '25, but we need to get on it now in terms of an application for next year. So if we apply now and we do get the grant, it's not going to impact until '21 in terms of our budget, but going forward with that vision that we could be environmentally sensitive and do more than just what we're covering at this point in terms of stormwater management, but actually make it a cleaner, safer system. Can I have the motion that we go ahead with that grant application from Counselor? Counselor Thompson?
Can I, can I quickly, would you like to comment on it? Yeah, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I believe Ms. Sheets wanted to speak towards this. There is a slight change in the dollar amount, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we just met with the engineers last week to discuss the preliminary designs on the project, and we, they had, they had some costs in there that they weren't quite sure about with restoration works, and so we clarified that, and so the costs went up a bit in order to cover off the costs of some restoration for sidewalk and for curb gutter. So the actual amount is...
One point two four, one point five. That's all we share?
Yes, yes, for sure.
And the total grant?
The total grant is 4.65 million, and this ties in with the not N D M P grant that we did get to, which ties in directly with the DMAP project. So this is, that portion was only a smaller portion of the stormwater system in the downtown core. This completes it, so this is the entire stormwater system for the downtown core. So it ties in with the DMAP works as well.
What another benefit here that would be with this, if this work goes ahead, a lot of the downtown would be opened up, and a lot of the old infrastructure for the storm system would be removed. It also means market. So this would be the ideal time to then look by that point on seeing what could be done with market app in terms of turning it into that market district, making, changing things around maybe, making that Roger Brooks kind of vision a little bit come to life. There is an opportunity to tie into that at that point as well.
Counselor Thompson and Mossman?
I would just, I'd like to put that resolution on the floor.
And seconded by Counselor Korlick. Thank you. Comment on it, or do you want to go to Counselor Mossman?
The question I have, Your Worship, is it going to delay the DMAP works?
Good question.
The short answer to that question is no, given the staging of it, this will come a few years later, but it actually works hand in glove with the DMAP work set as proposed. It's going to be first out of the gate. Right down Riverside, there's a major interceptor, and this work, as Ms. Sheets said, it was the old N D M P funding. It was supposed to tie into that interceptor. We weren't successful in that, but we now have a second opportunity to do this work. And to Daniel's point, this is a great opportunity to revitalize that downtown.
Yeah. But once again, it won't delay planned works, DMAP works. No.
Very forward thinking. Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually think, this is an emotion, but I think this discussion should happen after our budget discussion later on in the agenda, because at the end of the day, I don't know where the money's coming from. If you look at the budget numbers we have, we're falling, following, falling behind by $2 million each and every year, have been for the last 10 years on just our infrastructure. And there is no way, if you look at the numbers later on in the agenda, that I can see that we're going to even tax our way out of it to get to the allocation that we know we need. So I, again, I'm against borrowing for this project, and I think even in our asset management, it talks about borrowing and when you do borrow or not, but I just don't know where the money is actually going to come from. We've got recreation facilities that are going to be hitting us. We've got landfill issues. We've got, unless I'm going to be telling you, probably overruns on a DMAP project. So again, and that doesn't even include the community center. So I don't know where the money is actually going to come from.
Counselor Thompson?
I hear Counselor Zelinski's concerns. However, we are applying for a grant, and that's all that we're giving the approval for. And as Justin said, this isn't going to be happening for several years, so we certainly have more than ample time to determine and to build up our reserves. Secondly, some of the projects that you were making, referring to, the community center, the landfill, and some of the others are, they're regional district projects that we have, excuse me, a vote at the table on, and the community center is something that's going to be going to referendum. So I would encourage council to support this resolution so that our staff can get underway with the application, and then we can proceed from there.
Counselor Studley?
During the construction phase, could you foresee tendering any of the businesses?
Yes, absolutely, there's going to be disruption downtown. It's inevitable in regards to some of the works that we need to do down there, but I firmly believe that the ends justify the means. Doesn't mean that the businesses will close, we just need to make workarounds in regards to that and secondary access. I just, on a secondary note, I just wanted to point out that this is actually an infrastructure project. It actually falls directly in line with policy 808, the asset management policy, and that the leverage for this grant is 73%, so for every dollar that you spend, you get three.
Thank you. Follow-up, Counselor Studley and then Counselor Zelinski?
Yes, do you know what time of year this might take place? Would you be trying to schedule it on more of an off-season?
Yeah, the short answer to that is absolutely, yeah, we want to give it when it affects the downtown core.
Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just, Counselor Thompson's comment, so are you saying that we're going to drop that last, that council also puts a $1.2 million away? As far as the resolution we have in front of you, if we're stopping short and just say applying for the grant and not committing the $1.2 million, if that's what you're suggesting?
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I think the application for the grant is predicated on the city having a share. It's going to be up to the council at that time to determine where that share is going to be coming from, and I'm suggesting that we would have time to build on those reserves and review. Also, I just wanted to comment quickly. In 1985, when the downtown revitalization was done, the first time, the streets were torn up, and the businesses actually paid for a portion of that, and it was well received. So I don't see that it's going to be a problem for business. I think they would very much support that project. And I believe Dolores had something she wanted, she's been trying to say.
Dolores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a project that is in our 20-year capital plan, so this isn't something that we're adding on additional. This is one of those situations where we're taking a project that was in the future and shuffling it back and moving stuff around. So it was already in the plan, it's just that we now have, you know, the opportunity to apply for the grant funding for it. So this isn't over and above policy 808, this is part of policy 808.
Thank you. And I assume from the aspect of risk that if we got the grant in '21 and we didn't feel that we had sufficient ability to cover our portion of it, we don't need to go ahead with it?
Try to stop that, right?
Well, you know, it's clearly, if the question is whether or not asset renewal or borrowing are not acceptable to us next year, that we're not committed to it at this point. This is applying for the grant. Counselor Zelinski?
Just a quick comment, do you know what title it was under the 20-year capital plan? Because my, the list I have, I couldn't find it on the list, is the title different?
It would have been, it's in our multi-utilities risk assessment and our long-term capital planning to do the stormwater. I think that we were piecemealing it and trying to do a little bit here, a little bit there. Public Works was doing the work, and so it's on the radar, but we're constantly adjusting the capital plan. Every time we do new projects, every time we get new grants, it's a living document, and so it became even more evident with the flooding. So the flood was the big driver for this because it was a huge problem for the downtown businesses, and the stormwater was one of the biggest problems they had?
I'll just add that the flood actually made the stormwater system worse, obviously, because it took the sediment in there, so this wouldn't fix that problem. So even though that we were, under the DMAP, we're doing the diking, if we have a big rain event, there's potential for issues with that stormwater system, not to mention the environmental impact.
Counselor Mossman?
Yes, Your Worship, I really, I do, I want to speak in support of the motion to begin with. I certainly would understand that it should be in our capital plan. Those pipes are ancient, they're corrupt, they didn't work, right? They let in more water than they let out. They need, they have to be replaced. This is not a, this is not a we would want, this is a we need. I guess, so I support the grant application, and I would certainly support if I'm around when it comes, the spending. My biggest concern is, what if we don't get the grant? We cannot last indefinitely with those pipes.
Without doing that work? Yes. So even more essential at this point to we support the motion. Counselor Thompson and Korlick?
In support of what Counselor Mossman's saying, we're making an application, and we can, we can make decisions with respect to what we're going to do once we have an answer back on that application. You know, if we get it, that's great. If we're turned down and things go to hell in a basket, pardon the expression, then we're going to, we're going to be stuck paying for it anyway, all, so.
Counselor Korlick?
I'd like to speak in support of this resolution as well, because, yes, we do need to upgrade our infrastructure, and this is an opportunity to take. I mean, again, it's not, no guarantees we're going to get the grant, so let's just, let's just do it and move forward. It could be years.
Counselor Zelinski bringing this to a close fairly soon?
Yeah, and so if the discussion is that we're applying for the grant, and once we know whether we have the grant or not, it comes back to this table, I have no problem.
All right, and so this is a motion on the table with the adjusted contribution by the city, and calling the motion. All those in favor? opposed? Carry. Next item of business is final approval temporary use permit for 7454 19th Street. We have some further feedback on the, public feedback on the temporary use permit from engineering and planning. You may have gotten that on your desk. So the motion in front of us tonight is to grant a temporary use permit for a microcraft brewery at 7454 19th Street. Can I have that motion? Counselor Studley? Counselor Studley? Seconded by Counselor Korlick. Discussion?
I noticed that the Star Auto, or even Star Tech Holdings had a series of questions. Have they been answered to the company?
We had asked him to put things in writing, so he did put things in writing, so some of these, most of them were answered verbally, and most of the answers that were actually in the report and in the letter that we sent out, but yeah, so it was, and we did receive some other phone calls about this application, and once we discussed and answered all the questions and requested, you know, if they wanted to provide a written response, and they did not, they were satisfied with the response.
Thank you.
You can't speak?
I wasn't speaking, we were at all.
We'd sent the letter.
Well, the thing is, is you can't speak in a regular meeting.
Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Just a benefit, can you just quickly answer the questions, please?
The current zoning is, as explained in the report, is I-2, which is light industrial. And vacant and underutilized is that the entire building is not being utilized currently for any uses, and so it's not, that only portion of the building is being utilized. Sort of legal structure for a microcraft brewery, so I'm not quite sure if that is talking about the actual physical structure of the building or a structure for licensing, but yes, there would be, the building inspector would be involved with any building, any building permits and codes. And yes, there is a legal structure for licensing with the province, and a risk management assessment on the building and surrounding area. We go through a process with referrals where required, and we deal with municipal transportation with referrals, so they assess if it's traffic risk, then it would be the municipal transportation that would be assessing it, or, yes, we go through a referral process for these things, plus the building inspector, plus fire, plus...
The assessments of risk are done by those officials?
Yeah, and when these properties are zoned or rezoned, we go through a process of referrals for them as well. And when the O C P went through back in 2011, there would have been a full, you know, year and a half or two, I think you lived through it, so probably about a two-year process going through and looking at these changes in land use and proposed changes in land use, so that's at the time it would have been done.
Does that satisfy your concerns, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Further discussion on this matter? Do you have a motion on the table? Counselor Mossman?
Just, Your Worship, you know, the... Just, Your Worship, you know, Donaldson Drive is the only one-way street in Grand Forks, right? And has difficulties with egress to the highway. My question is, is the plan before us allow for parking of the patrons on Donaldson? Or is it parking is just going to be available on 19th?
There is some parking that would be on-site, but like many buildings that were built previously, these are zero lot line buildings. So like every building in the downtown core is a zero lot line building. So we allow parking and public parking in these areas, and so this was a building that was built before our zoning bylaw. And so we can't, if we said that we're not going to allow parking at any building that doesn't currently meet our current bylaws, then half, you know, probably three cores of the commercial buildings in town would not have their adequate parking. So this is a zero lot line, and I would say we don't want to encourage people to drive to a micro brewery. We would prefer them to walk and take other forms of transportation rather than parking. And there is sufficient parking in that area, and let's see, this 19th, Donaldson is the one way, there is no egress from Donaldson onto the highway, so that's maybe onto 19th Street, but if you're talking about 19th, I mean, the minister transportation updated that or upgraded that intersection with turning lanes and such, it was quite a few years ago ago.
Thank you. Further questions, Counselor Moeslin?
I don't think I quite got the answer. So the answer is yes, we would permit parking on the east side of the building affronting Donaldson.
And that's public parking?
Well, it's private property.
No, there's no access, the access for the building is on the west side of the building.
Well, that was my.
Yeah, so the loading zone, the loading zone would be at the back.
Yes, I can understand it being a loading zone, but not public parking.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to get the patrons of this, you know, micro brewery away from Donaldson Drive.
The one-way street.
Because it's one-way, problematic.
Right.
The entrance is on 19th.
The entrance is on 19th. Further, council are ready for this question? We are granting a temporary use permit for a micro brewery on 19th Street. All those in favor, opposed, carry. One employee of council.
No.
There's one more development permit here. Where am I?
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going, keep going. Okay. Okay, development variance permit, non-medical cannabis retail license store 7500 Donaldson Council is being asked to select one of three options on this list to make it in form of a motion. We have a motion here, or do you want to open this for discussion? Any comments from management?
I can quickly speak to that. Could you please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So staff sent out the notification to the surrounding property owners, I believe, that it's attached in that form here as well, that council received, that second paper. We received one written item, as it seems, per the package, that speaks against the facility in that location. I believe I haven't, I haven't seen any other written feedback come in other than that one, which references also a letter that's attached on the very last page from June of last year, when the initial proposal went through, unless Ms. Sheen says any other verbal information that came in.
Dolores.
This is the only written response that we got, and again, Lee did field some questions on this facility and did send out emails and requested written. We don't do verbal, because we got to make sure that we, that folks get their message across and not some version that we interpret, so we asked for written responses, and the one response we did get was, is what we provided separately tonight.
Which you have in front of you, Counselor. Counselor Thompson.
Just a further clarification, so if we proceed, this goes back to public hearing?
No, we've already proceeded through the process, we've had the public hearing, and we are ready to make the decision. What it does is if you decide that you'd like to allow cannabis retail stores at that location as permitted use in the zoning bylaw, and temporary use permits are often used for this to test out a location for something and see whether or not it's something that's preferred by council, and after the three years, if council chooses to not renew the temporary use permit, they can choose not to, or they can apply for up to six years, or if, you know, during that time, council chooses to result it completely. So temporary use permits can be used for many, many things, and that would be one of... Oh, did I say DVP? My apologies, DVP. Working on two reports at the same time. Yes, sorry, this is the DVP. So this is a variance that'd be, sorry, this is a variance that'd be registered on title for this particular use.
Council, are you prepared to make one of the options as a motion? Counselor Thompson.
I would report, I would report a motion that council approved the issuance of a DVP to reduce the setback distance from 100 meters to 36 meters between the proposed location of the non-medical cannabis retail store at 7500 Donaldson Drive, legally described as Lot 2, District Lot 380, on plan as DYD and the parcel boundary of the community used zoned property at 1924 75th Avenue, James Donaldson Park.
Seconded for that motion. Counselor Moeslin. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. And now we're going to the one employee of council. We've had considerable discussion of this one employee of council. We're actually aligning our policy with practice, and I would entertain that motion. Come on now. This is giving the CAO the responsibility for running the organization as the employee of council. He is the one single employee of council. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Corlick. Counselor Zelinski.
Just a question, in this document down at the bottom, page one, we have a dollar figure, I guess, and I'm wondering when we're going to get that number, what our cost is for full-time equipment, part-time, and contracted staff, and when can we have that
Sorry, catch me up here.
Bottom bullet point. Yeah, so the bottom bullet you point here speaks to the FTEs, full-time, equal lens, part-time, equal lens, and contracted staff. So Ms. Rhodes is currently doing budget process, so we haven't really asked finance staff to do much else, other than year-end audit and budget. It's one of those numbers that can easily be put together once staff has some time. My concern is simply not overburdening staff with things that may not be required at this particular moment, but if Ms. Rhodes finds time over the next couple of weeks before the next council meetings or so, that's an option to bring that number back.
Counselor Thompson.
I would think that that would be something that would be included in our budget on an annual basis. And so perhaps, you know, in those discussions, that's when we could identify and ask the questions on, you know, the proposed costs for this, I mean, how many are they going to need, and so on and so forth.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I guess that's my point, it's, we're going to, we've been asked to approve a budget, and this is one of the things that we take into account during the budget, so yeah, the sooner we get that number, I guess, the better.
Agreed. Counselor, ready for the vote on this? This is the single employee philosophy for our CAO's operation. All those in favor, opposed, carry. And on to our number of motions. We have four motions on this in terms of moving forward with budget recommendation. Can I ask, Daniel, do you want to present it at this point?
Sure, I can, I can.
We can just open it up for discussion.
Why don't we just do, there's four resolutions and.
Want to do it that way? Start with the top ten, counsel?
Yes, I would, I would move that council implemented 4% increase in property taxation for the year 2020.
4% increase.
For Policy 808.
Seconded for that, Counselor Corlick. And discussion? Counselor Zelinski.
Yeah, I'd like to point to the second page of the numbers that we have, and especially the reserve amounts. We're going from, what, $7 million this year, down to just over $1 million in a couple of years. So what's not in here, again, regardless of the RDKB involved in the community center at $10 million, I'm going to guess that the city's portion is going to be $4 million at the end of it. We just added another 1.2 million onto this. If you notice, the amount that we're putting into reserves after the next couple of years is the same that we're taking out, so we're not getting ahead on that 50% at all. The big, the big thing that is not known, that we've been told, is that all this flood mitigation work we're doing is out the window unless we do something with that Riverside Dyke. Like it was presented to us that on that floodplain mapping is, all this stuff is going to work, but we have to fudge the numbers because the Riverside Dyke is not high enough. And I have not seen any cost projections, I have not seen anything on how we're going to handle that, because we could do all that $53 million worth of work, but if that grant becomes in the back way, we're kind of hooped. So again, I don't see us taxing our way out of it, I can only see us cutting some money out of the operating cost to try and make this, this plan work for the future, but yeah, that's one point.
Thank you. So this is on motion number one, again, on the property tax increase, the motion on the floor is 4%. Counselor Thompson.
I hear and appreciate Counselor Zelinski's concerns. However, having said that, this city has gone for too many years with little to no tax increases. We didn't increase taxes last year. We're looking at, and I'm proposing a 4% tax increase for 2020. I'm paying the same taxes and rates as everybody else that in the city of Grand Forks, and you know, what do they say, there's only two things that you're sure of in life, and that's death and taxes. So, you know, it's, it's not a decision that I put forward lightly, but the thing is, is that, and I always said this when I was in Seattle, the day has come when you're going to have to walk Peter to pay Paul. And, you know, if we don't do something now, we don't start, we have to have a starting point. I hear what you're saying about costs, I think that this will likely be the last year on some of the higher operating costs, and I just encourage council to please support this tax increase.
Okay, and moving around the table, let's hit Counselor Studly first, and then Counselor Moeslin, then Counselor Zelinski, that's okay?
People always shudder at taxes being raised. The prices of everything goes up, whether it's this Kleenex box, paper clips, whether it's all the materials that go into road paving, building repair, vehicles, those all go up. Cost of gasoline, that all goes up, so that's, that's a big part of any tax increase for municipalities. And then there's also things that get added. So in this case, we are adding more security, because there has been a demand for that, and there are elements that will hopefully increase communications, so that's what I'm excited about.
Thank you, and Counselor Moeslin?
Yes, Your Worship, I believe the previous council committed us, committed the city to preserving 50% of the needs for the capital assets management program. I think I've got that right, and that was then done, I think for two or three years of that term. Wasn't done last year, because we decided to give everybody a rate of 0%, which is, as been pointed out to us, was actually a cut to the city, because everything went up by 2%. So the city took a cut. I guess, well, I have so, I have really a great deal of empathy with what Counselor Zelinski said. I have real concerns, council knows. We may, we may, our, the city may be on the hook for more than it can count on through the DMAP. That really does worry me. But I would like to point out that if we don't do this, what we really should be doing is raising taxes 8%, because then we would be increasing the reserves to closer to 100% to keep with our plan, because even though we're being told as per Policy 808, I was, I'm just trying to point out that we're already short of Policy 808, because we're trying to do half of what we need to do according to Policy 808. So, you know, I certainly, and I also hear what Counselor Studly says, you know, I guess, I support the motion, Your Worship. I sure hope it's enough. Thank you.
Counselor Zelinski, and then Counselor, go ahead, counsel.
I support the motion too. I, we want things done, and we're always complaining about this is not done, or that's not done, or why is there, I don't know, something happening that hasn't been done in the past year, two years, or whatever the case may be. Last year, we didn't increase the taxes at all, and that's put us behind the, well, as far as I'm concerned, we need to go forward, and yes, I live in the city too, it's going to increase my taxes for sure, but I like the amenities I have, and I don't want to see them reduced or gone, and I know that, as Counselor Studly was saying, the cost, the increase in cost is, everything is going up. It doesn't matter to go to the grocery store, it's all going up. And I think we have to look towards that, and I also agree that 8% was probably the one we should have had, but that would have been a huge human crime, we would have been pilloried, pilloried, I'm sure, but I think, I think we have to do this.
Thank you. Counselor Zelinski.
Okay, maybe my comments were, were not the ones I wanted to make. I'm not against the tax increase. What I'm against is only putting $900,000 into our asset management. So you're right, maybe it should be 8 or 10 to fill that gap. What I'm saying is, if you look at the numbers, we cannot increase taxes by 10% each year just trying to make that 50%. So even at, rounded off to $2 million, which our 2010 asset management plan said, Counselor Studly was right, everything goes up. If it was $2 million in 2010, with the information we had then, it's got to be two and a half by now, and we're still falling behind. You know, we may be doing storm sewer, we may be. You know, we may be doing storm sewer, we may be doing other stuff. It does not fix the pipes in the ground that are getting less use or deteriorating as we speak. So it's not the tax increase, it's the amount putting back into asset management. And the only way I see it, because I don't want to tax people out of this community, is to cut operating costs somehow. And a little tongue-in-cheek for everybody out there. It's a regional district fellow that's trying to fight for less taxes for you, so please keep that in mind.
Ready for the question, counsel? This is a general 4% increase in taxation. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Resolution number two, Counselor Thompson, you're on the roll.
Boy, I can be, I just have to find the words here.
Increase the utility rates for water and wastewater by 3.5%.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
And seconded by Counselor Corlick. Discussion. Covering cost. This is a necessary increase. You've seen the figures. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counselor Corlick, did you want to clarify your vote?
Uh, four, yes.
That was a yes. Okay, thank you. Motion is carried.
I just wanted to say that three of us live in the city at this table and pay the taxes, well, four of us, one is absent, and he doesn't pay every rate either. But, you know, this is our costs also that are going to be going up, and we're going to be paying the pipe bill over everybody else. So I know they're not popular decisions, but they are ones that have to be made if we're going to provide the services that everybody wants and needs.
Thank you. And editorializing, Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you. You're right, there, you know, we are in charge of trying to run the city as best we can wherever we come from, that's for sure. The one thing I'm disappointed with is that, is on our transparency side of things. We had a couple of budget workshops, but unfortunately, with passing the tax rate tonight, we did not get the public a chance to voice their concerns on it. If we had this at the committee of the whole first, at least they could voice their concerns. But to make a decision and then wait for questions after the meeting, I think is doing a bit of disservice on that. But we're past that point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To date, we're actually not passing the tax rate. So what's going to happen with this is now this is going to go into the bylaw, that's the financial plan, which will come to the committee of the whole on the 9th of March. And then there's the opportunity for public input. If counsel wants to change the bylaw at that point, that's an opportunity. I hear what Counselor Zalinski is saying, though. Like, in past years, we had cameras here for budget workshops, or we had the gallery filled even during the workshops. We did advertise it on Facebook. Our resources are limited, as we know, but we tried to make it possible for the public to come to these meetings. So, yeah, but there was the opportunity for providing input.
Rebuttal?
So what I hear is I have a chance to kick this again, and with public input and all the letters and emails that you guys are going to get, we've got another chance to change this.
I think that's correct. Thank you. All right, Counselor Thompson.
I'm going to express concerns that this is coming up at the next committee of the whole meeting. Counselor Corlick and I are not going to be at those meetings because we are going to be at a economic development summit, annual summit in Colorado. So can this be deferred, or can they? I want to be here to participate in those discussions.
So the committee of the whole would be the introduction of the bylaw. The two weeks later would be the first three readings. So from Ms. Rhodes here, she was shaking her head, no, we can't really. She's trying to get these bylaws through because after this one's done, the tax rate bylaw has to be passed as well, if I remember this right.
Well, I'm just afraid that, with all due respect.
We don't pull fast line?
Exactly.
So you would miss the committee of the whole, but you would be here for the formal hearings?
On the 23rd, yes. Can you sign in blood that you won't change this?
Well, I think, you know, if we're lucky enough, we'll have it on camera, and Mr. Johnson will have it recorded, so that you will have an opportunity to look at that committee of the whole meeting.
After the fact.
After the fact. You could phone in. All right, we're at stumbling block here. It sounds like this cannot be put off. Counselors, can you work with this? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corlick.
I just want to point out, Mayor, that they can vote electronically, I understand.
But we're not, we're going to be in sessions.
I won't be present for the debate unless you, the chair could recognize you.
This is for the committee of the whole?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we're going to be in sessions at the summit.
And those are recommendations to the regular council meeting anyway?
It's not that I don't trust you guys.
I won't pull anything on you, I'll tell you that.
Okay, we have a comfort here that you'll work with that? Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. And moving on to resolution number three, that counsel consider an anticipated electrical surplus, use a portion of the surplus to offset shortfalls in roads, water and sewer. Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corlick. So the public knows that we do make some money on electrical. The question is how we use it, and I'm sure that we'll have lots of comment on the next resolution, which is that we need to plan ahead on how we use it in future. But at this point in time, we need it now. And so, counselors, we have resolution number three on the table. Comments? Counselor Zalinski.
I think number three is redone, and number four myself, but.
I'm sure you'll support number four, and I'm hoping you'll support number three at this point.
Yeah, I think once we're done.
Counselor Mazzlin?
Yes, Your Worship, the concept is, you know, of sinking funds here, funds that are supposed to support themselves. We just indicated that we would be willing to increase water and wastewater by 3.5%. Now we're going to, now, in the following motion, we're told that we're, you know, we're going to put, now we're going, in addition to that, we're going to pour in money from the electrical. I understand that the city does generate revenue with the electrical, and that revenue should go to the community. I just said, I would hope first that the electrical service is supported.
Not being neglected.
Yes, I find that the surplus should be first used, as far as I'm concerned, to support the electrical service. Then if there's, that service is well-supported, okay. Then, look, if you're just taking money right out of the electrical, it's not going to, it's only going to work for a couple of years before you're behind on it.
Like ICBC's mess. Yeah. Counselor Corlick?
Uh, just a quick note, it is saying a portion. It's not saying all. So that might be my thinking, but it is saying portion.
You're assuming that we wouldn't move it out if there was a problem with electrical, we would address that. Counselor Thompson?
Would it make members of council more comfortable if the, it was, oh. The council considering an anticipated electrical surplus in 2020, that a portion of that surplus be used to offset shortfalls in roads, waters and sewer reserves?
Limiting it to this year.
Yeah, and then the next, number four is that.
Planning ahead.
Planning ahead. Would that, does that make more sense?
I don't see a smile.
Sort of a half word.
Yeah. You want to use it this year? Because I thought, looking at the budget, everything's allocated accordingly.
This is to consider, so I'm assuming that when you say consider, that we would have some say in terms of how that money is moved around in the final discussion of our budget.
Do we ask the CAO to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we don't have a particular allocation of the electrical service into the different reserves. So that could be proposed along with the financial plan.
Yes.
Introduction, just to get a better idea about how much that might be and how much we could allocate to those other reserves.
Exactly. Thank you. Counselor Zalinski?
So my understanding is that our asset management plan says that any excess in operating funds goes into that department's capital reserve. Do I have that wrong?
True, Mr. Mayor. No, that'd be correct.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, you ready for this motion? Are we amending it to add the 20th, or you want to leave it alone? Because the next one will compromise that.
Okay. Then we'll stay with that.
All right. Question, then, all in favor, opposed, carried. And number four, Counselor Zalinski, would you like to make this motion?
I'd love to.
And seconded, Counselor Corlick. So again, this is speaking to getting some forward thinking on how we do this in future, and very appropriate at this time. Ready for the question? All those in favor, carried. Thank you, counselors. And summer events, special occasions, there's a list there of items that don't fall into the assigned decision-making that we've given to our staff. Special occasions, licenses, baseball, Donaldson Park, party in the street, what's the other one there?
That's the two.
That's the two. Okay. And number two is the noise bylaws, so we'll do number one first. Counsel, can someone make this motion, then, that we approved, this with all the protections we need from licensing and security? Counselor Corlick, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Discussion on this, all those in favor, carried. The second one is counsel approve the variance to the noise control bylaw for 28th to July 5th as per the international baseball tournament in games going longer than 10 o'clock. A motion for that. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Studley. Hopefully, it won't go all night, but they usually wrap them up pretty close to the 10 o'clock anyway, people are tired, so. All those in favor? And the third one is counsel approve the issuing of special occasion license for the Market Avenue Party in the Street, again, with the insurance being named and all the rest of the details of that. Counselor Corlick, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any questions about that? All those in favor? And the next one is a noise control bylaw game to permit the party in the street to run to 10:30, so just a half an hour past what our bylaw currently says. That motion. Counselor Corlick, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? And so this doesn't include the Canfest event. We'll deal with that when Gene Simmons gets back to us. Does the summer event, special occasions, inter-community business license? We did have, again, some additional written feedback on that matter. Was there not something written there that, or do we have no feedback on it? I thought we had something. Oh, okay, confused. Okay, a motion. Counselor Zalinski, this is for the inter-agency, inter-community. Counselor Corlick, any discussion on this matter? All those in favor, carried. And.
That's it?
That's it. Questions? From the public, gallery. Nothing, Gene? It said nothing. Any questions from the gallery? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, GFTV. I'm just curious during the budget discussions, Counselor Zalinski had made a comment about if the dykes not high enough. Could you expand upon that, what you meant?
Go ahead, Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you. So during the flood mapping that's been done for the city and the urban system did, I didn't go to the community presentation of that. But unless somebody can tell me that I'm wrong, anytime that we redid a scenario with the flooding of North Rock Hill, it was always with the caveat that this is how the dykes would work, but we had to massage the model to increase the dike up Riverside. I thought it was about a foot is what they put on their model. But everybody, everybody, the people from Riverside knows during the flood that it was, the water was inches from going over that dike. So I haven't heard a cost estimate on rebuilding that, or raising it, or anything like that. So another expenditure that will come down our way. So, yeah, again, I don't know where the money's come from.
Mr. Johnson, does that satisfy your concern?
Yeah, I was just curious what the reference was.
Okay. Any further questions from the gallery, or anyone want to respond to that? Not at this point. Here, no further. Last for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Thompson.